Well, he wants to go to see Barbie's practice. And when he comes out, but yes, she was supposed to come with him.
Yeah.
Now that all the council members are present, I call to order the July 19th meeting of the City of West Sacramento City Council, West Sacramento Redevelopment Agency and Finance Authority, and we will begin with the land acknowledgement. We would like to acknowledge that the land on which we live, work, learn, and commune is the original homelands of the indigenous people of West Sacramento who have stewarded this land throughout the generations. We acknowledge and we thank the original inhabitants who have occupied, maintained, and secured this place and who still exist on this land. We respect and celebrate the many diverse indigenous peoples still connected to this land on which we gather. The council met in closed session this evening on the agenda item related to the city manager's performance evaluation and no action was taken. We would like to invite our guests to join the council and staff in the pledge, which will be led by Michelle Townsend. Please rise up and lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I'd like to believe you to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands, one nation, God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Ms. Townsend. I'd like to add that there is an update to our agenda. If you're here on item 15, we are pulling that item from tonight's agenda for additional information that we will need to obtain before it is brought to us before our vote. And if you'd like to speak on this item, we ask that members of the public use the public comment under item one to be able to speak about the agenda item tonight. And as is noted on the agenda, city council is prohibited by state law from discussing or taking any action on items that are brought under item one for public comment, but it provides an opportunity for the public to have a public forum to address any concerns or issues, to address city council, and we ask that they, many speakers, address city council directly. We ask that they do obtain a request to speak card, which is on the, against the wall there, and bring that card over to our clerk referencing the item that you are requesting to speak. And Madam Clerk, if there are any requests to speak on item 15, that they be brought up to item one. No? Okay. And so, the clerk will then call on the individuals for that particular agenda item. And once the staff report has been read on any item that is in the rest of the regular or special agenda, the clerk will announce your name for you to walk up to the podium to speak. Now, in front of the clerk, there is a timer. To ensure that everyone has a chance to be heard, we ask that all comments be limited to three minutes. And also, in front of the clerk is an analog clip chart which indicates which agenda item the council is currently considering. We also recognize that for some, speaking in public can cause anxiety, so we request that there be no applause or boos, cat calls, or other demonstrations. Furthermore, we also ask that we maintain a civil discourse here in the chambers, and we ask that those in attendance and those who address city council abide by the code of conduct posted along the wall, and I think it's on the podium as well. And not speak in loud, threatening, offensive, abusive, or other disrespectful language that disrupts, disturbs, or otherwise impedes the orderly conduct of the meeting. And I think you will also notice that there is just, you know, a little division up here, and I think that's part of being able to move the council meeting a little smoother in the beginning and in the end. So if you would like to speak with any of the council members, they will meet you and, you know, once you can go around and, once they can get around to speaking with you. Now, this brings us to item one, presentations by the public on matters not on the agenda within the jurisdiction of the council, and each person has three minutes to speak. Madam Clerk, are there any requests to speak?
Yes, ma'am. Our first speaker is Allen Hirsch.
Good evening, Allen Hirsch from Yolo Mobility. We are in a world of pain, a world of pain. Our world is in pain. We are facing unprecedented floods, wildfires, smoke, shutting down our universities, our schools, our community. We have fires, and our communities are on fire, and we have heat, life-threatening heat that basically, that makes it impossible to go outside. It's destroying jobs, the people who harvest our food, the people who build our homes we so desperately need, the people who maintain our streets and roads and facilities. Yet, we seem to be frozen in terms of addressing this. I know the city, I'm talking about climate change, the city has passed the president's, the mayor's resolution about climate change. You've committed to reduce your driving by 30% the next 10 years and 40% over the next 20 years. Yet, we are moving ahead on the widening of the I-80 freeway, and the science of this is unequivocable. The university professors have written to the Yolo County Transportation District and said, "This will basically not fix congestion. This will not address cut-through traffic. This will increase greenhouse gases. The roads will re-congest. We will just have more lanes congested." This is the science. The science is undeniable. Head of the Yolo County National Center for Sustainable Transportation, Susan Handy, wrote a letter to the board, yet at Monday's meeting, no one discussed the letter. No one at that board mentioned greenhouse gases. No one mentioned, mentioned vehicle miles traveled, which are related to it, which we have to stop. No one, it's been ignored. There was a letter from the public, 20 people signed a letter, including university professors, asking, it was not mentioned at all. We seem to be frozen. Caltrans comes in here and they say, "Gee, we have some money for you, some free money, $600 a person for the residents, per person to widen the freeway, free money. Widen the freeway. Ignore the climate change, ignore the science, and we're chasing the money." No one is asking any questions. If we move forward on this freeway, this tells our children that it's performative, what you're doing on the Climate Action Plan. You're not paying attention. We need your leadership. You were elected to lead it to change things, to change. We have an institution, Caltrans, that's designed to build freeways. We know that's a 20th century solution. It doesn't work anymore. Someone needs to stand up and question this. Please, we need your climate leadership. Ask questions of what's going on with Caltrans. Ask why the sci, why they're denying science. Ask why university has proven that Caltrans fudges the numbers, fudges the numbers to basically prove these things make sense. Please. Your world relies on your leadership. Thank you very much.
Robin Davis.
I'm Robin, and I live in my 160-square-foot semi-off-grid tiny home on wheels on my undeveloped residential property here in West Sacramento. The League of California Cities, which represents 476 local cities, including West Sacramento, is advocating for $3 billion annually in permanent state funding for homelessness and affordable housing programs. Where is that money going to come from? And what else could we be using that money towards? The state will have to cut funding from other areas to instead fund government-provided shelter for residents. I'm not saying no money should go to this issue, but many of these same California cities advocating for more funding simultaneously still do not allow the use of alternative building materials, have minimum square footage requirements, have outdated zoning, have expensive building fees, and complicated permitting processes that create delayed timeframes. If we took as much time as we do asking the state for more funding for homelessness and put that into reforming our existing housing policy at the local level, we may have a chance at more substantial long-term change more quickly. This would allow the state to allocate more funds towards things like infrastructure, like our roads or other programs, to strengthen family stability, like mental health resources, access to food, and our parks. If we do not think allowing more freedom of diverse housing options and policy reform is related to finding the funding for other projects like Bright Park or other roads, then I fear we may be lacking the big-picture perspective. Please give someone like me, who does not need that many resources, who has the land, who has a safe, functioning, full-time dwelling, the opportunity to free up the traditional housing inventory for other demographics such as large families, caretakers, or persons with disabilities. Those are who are in need and can benefit the most from the current traditional housing options. Please give the freedom to build our own diverse housing back to the people to provide ourselves with basic needs and dignity through choice. Lastly, I wanted to share that there will be a Home and Garden Show in Roseville from August 18th to August 20th, that Dan Fitzpatrick, the president of the Tiny Home Industry Association, will be attending to answer questions for the general public and local policymakers. There will be tiny homes you can walk through, so we'll be sending a flyer out with those details, and we hope to see people from West Sacramento there. Thank you.
Eric Alvarez.
Council members, it's indeed a pleasure to be able to offer this comment. Thank you so much for the opportunity. My name is Eric Alvarez, and my wife and I live on Squaw Road. I came down here to offer some comment to item number 15, but then found that it was being pulled from the agenda, so the city manager was kind enough to say, "Oh, well, you can chat on item number one." So I only have three short comments, and then I'll return when the item is brought to the agenda once again. There are three things that my wife and I would hope that the city could help us out with. One is if staff could please compile a list of what institutions or agencies where we might, as residents of Squaw Road, need to change our address. And I ask this actually on behalf of our older neighbors in the area who might not be familiar with every group that they need to contact. Number two, considering that this is a state mandate, if the city could, on our behalf, contact those local, county, and state agencies that will require the name change, to ask them to please waive any regular operation costs that might normally be charged for a name change. And number three, finally, if the city could, in perpetuity, maintain a database of the affected residents of this name change, so that should we, at some point in the future, engage another agency somewhere in the world who might question the fact that Squaw Road was our name of our residents and no longer is? I mean, who knows? You never know what a bureaucracy might do. But I'll return again when this item comes back up for the agenda. Thank you so much for your time, and I wish everyone a pleasant evening.
Hello, Madam Mayor, city council members. Hope you're doing well tonight. My name's Hussein. I'm a coach with West Sac Soccer Club. Hopefully, you're not tired of me. It's been many meetings now. I know it's on the agenda tonight. I think it'll be on the agenda next month about the Bright Park plan. I just wanted to come and say that the club is very looking forward to having these community engagement meetings with the Parks and Rec Department and the developers to talk about our needs for Bright Park. I'd like to say that the plan looks pretty good from what we've seen. It addresses a lot of our needs, but we are internally discussing what are exactly our needs so that we can more effectively communicate them. I think last time I talked about San Diego and how much economic impact soccer has, and maybe that might have rolled some eyes because we're not San Diego, obviously, and I mentioned Davis in Roseville, and that might have rolled some eyes because I mentioned how all of these cities have soccer complexes. I wanted to mention a couple of cities that are similar to West Sac, maybe demographic-wise, economically, to mention that they also have soccer complexes and we don't. Chico has California Soccer Park. Dixon has Hall Memorial Park. Gault has Walker Community Park. Marysville has Beckworth Riverfront Park. Woodland has Senior Community Center. So these are all dedicated soccer complexes. Some of them are multi-use, but they have many, many fields. Populations, I think, are similar to West Sac, economically, socioeconomically similar to West Sac. But we don't, and we have a USL team, a semi-pro team, right here. So that's why I'm excited about the developments for Bright Park. I am excited it, as it is basically our soccer hub for the city. And I think in conversations, we can talk about, well, you know, not every single city has soccer infrastructure similar to these cities that I mentioned, like Folsom has distributed fields. They have a lot of very nice fields. They're distributed. They're not all in one place, and that works too, right? But I'm looking forward to the conversation. One last note is that about three years ago, I went and saw Holy Cross, and I think they redid their fields for about $60,000 or $70,000 they spent. They regraded it. It was probably one of the best fields in all of Sacramento region. And three years later, like, we haven't been able to figure out who to get in contact with to get access to that field, but it's basically a field that has gone unused. People climb the fence and go play pickup on it, and now it has weeds growing on it, and it's been underutilized. So it's just, that's, it's like, it's frustrating when you see there are infrastructure and then it's not being used. So, thank you for the time. Have a good evening. Bye.
Yolanda Viegas.
Good evening, city council members, esteemed Mayor Guerrero. Thank you so much for your service to our diverse community. I am a 20-year resident of West Sacramento. My roots stem from my father being a part of the first crop of police officers when our city was first incorporated in 1987. My husband was born and raised in Broderick, and my father-in-law was recently honored at the State of the City address for his service to our community. My daughter is a proud graduate of Washington Unified School District and just finished up her first year at Cal Poly Slow. And I am director of Heritage Peak Charter School, a longstanding organization here in our community, and was recently recruited for the chief advisory board, so working alongside Chief Strange as well. Tonight, I'm here representing West Sacramento Competitive Soccer. We are a subdivision of the Greater West Sacramento Soccer Club. We serve approximately 900 children and youth in our local community, and I would like to cordially invite you to our upcoming First Annual Kick-A-Thon. It is our opening day on Saturday, August 26th, at Summerfield Park from 11:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m. We have had tremendous support from our local businesses. We will have a big raffle. We would love for you to go see us in action and see the opportunities that we're providing for many of our youth, not only on the field, but also developing them off the field. We would love for you to be there and use this as one of your opportunities to garner and solicit authentic feedback from the 250 to 300 community members who are committed to youth sports in our community. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Ms. Viegas. Can you just get in touch with staff for any sponsorship opportunities?
Absolutely. Thank you.
Travis Castle.
I'm the one that's responsible for the pack that's in front of you, so sorry for the extra reading. Have you ever had a car that's not real reliable? Breaks down. Looks good, but you can't trust it. Out of nowhere, it'll break down when you need it the most. And it's not fuel-efficient, right? This is similar to what we're getting with the help of the state and federal government with homelessness. We just limp along. We hope that it works, but it's not. So I'd like to introduce The Path to Humanity to the City of West Sacramento. It is a self-funded plan that provides money to deal with homelessness. So this is not a crazed, far-left liberal concept where we create a Portland-style homelessness. No. This is providing money that the city can use to address the exact issues. Unlike what we have now, where you have to apply for a grant, wait for the grant. You only get funding for certain things. So, how's this self-funded? Well, there's no taxes. It's funded by businesses that, by creating special advertisements that can be placed on multiple surfaces. I'm not going to cover the benefits of the plan. It's pretty straightforward. We decrease crime, decrease suffering, and everything. And if you look at two pages from the back, I have a staged setup. So stage one is a, we can use a simple sticker similar to this, where citizens and businesses can purchase it. If 10% of the people of West Sacramento purchased the membership for $100 a year, it would generate $539,400 a year. If 25% of the businesses purchased it at $40 per month, it would make $250,000 a year. More than likely, you're going to get about 75% of the businesses participating, so I'd fully expect about $750,000. And you, we can have it on the website, as you see, and they get acknowledgement as well. And then stage two would be, we can utilize existing structures such as flagpoles, and we go on and on and on, stage two, A and beyond. But the main thing is, we're able to create wealth, we're able to create success, and empower the city with exactly what they need. So thank you for your time, and I hope that this can be an agenda item in the future.
As you know, there was an issue the last time I was here where you people don't believe what the city says. And I reviewed the video of Dante over here. This is a letter that I'm sending with 10 others to the Yellow County Grand Jury. Why? Because your data says one thing, but if you go right via, it's a whole different ballgame. So I got, I had four activists last week, two of them from SAC and a couple from over here, and I said, "What do you think I should do?" Well, if they're not on the same page, they don't believe what you say. Take them to the Yellow County Grand Jury and have them look at their books. Because if you're not on the same page with the community, you don't believe what I'm telling you, and I don't listen to data, because data can be changed by the city. That's the oldest trick that politicians do all the time. So I'm not even going to deal with that. I get an independent group of people out of Woodland, and they look at the big picture, not just one side. They look at the big picture. And that's what I want them to do, and I'm going to send this letter. This letter right here is actually directed to Aaron and anybody that's on that transportation committee, that I have 10 affidavits from different people. Three or four of them are drivers that don't work there anymore, and so they're not this company that you think is wonderful. Actually, I'm not going to throw her into the bus, but she actually had a conversation with one of those drivers. So it's, I'm just letting you know now that what you believe and what your data is telling you is not, you need to look at the big picture. You need to listen to what the community has to say. And I'm about law and order. I'm about straight across. If you break the law, you should be locked up. It don't matter if you're hauling kids around or you're hauling adults around, it's the same thing. And I learned in the military a long time ago, I don't give in. And there's an old saying in the military, "You never give up to the, you never give in to the enemy." I don't. If I believe in my own heart, something's going on, I will fight for it. That's just the way I am. I'm not disrespecting any of you ladies. I'm not saying any or making threats. I'm just telling you that I think somebody outside of the city council needs to look at the big picture and not just what you people like to preach about your data. Your data don't mean anything. To me, it don't. I'm an old-school guy. Show me that it don't have to, it don't have to be that way, but that's the way I took it the long time. I mean, the last time I was here. Thanks.
We have no additional speakers for this item.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Closing the public comment. Moving to our consent agenda, we have items 2 through 11, and Councilwoman Alcala will need to recuse herself for item seven. And what that means is that she will, she will need to step away during that item. We don't need to step away?
As long as it's just taken for separate vote.
Just a vote?
If there's discussion on the item, then she would need to step away.
Step away?
If it's just a vote, she can stay.
Thank you. Okay. At this time, are there any requests to remove an item for questions or presentation by our administration? Okay. I will ask for items four, five, six. Okay, I will ask for items 4, 5, 6 at this time, and then I will pull item 7 for a separate vote. Under item 4 is the Capital Improvement Program. Consideration of Adoption of Resolution 23-59. Commending the Capital Improvement Program, Approval of the Project Plan's Specifications and Award of Construction Contract to VSS International, Inc., for the Neighborhood Pavement Preservation and Arterial Streets Pavement Repair Projects. And I did receive an email explanation, thank you so much, that helped. It was on page 37, which talked about the Table 2, the Bid Alternative Summary. And just to be able to understand that that is for additional work that we are seeking, and what I didn't see under this Bid Alternative Summary is who will be receiving the work for that. I receive, I see the bid A through F, and then the amounts, but exactly who will be, be given the actual award of that bid?
Good evening. Ariana Dami, Director of Capital Projects. It is the same contractor that's in, is one contract for all of it.
I see.
So VSS International, Inc. will be...
So it's in addition to that, this will be that award amount, is that?
Correct. The way the bid package was put together is there's a base bid, and then there's options for us to consider, and we had bid alternatives. We chose to go with a few because we knew it may come back with, it just gives us more flexibility and options.
Thank you so much for that clarification. And then, that links it back to Page 36, the Community Investment Program. Is that, the components of that, under, you know, in the last sentence, is that the connection we're trying to make is either all of this or components of this? Is that what that's referring to? Under, you know, under the, like, last sentence of the Community Investment Program section?
So, for this contract, it's blending two different CIPs under one contract to get, and part of it is that program, the Community Investment.
I see, okay.
It's the Neighborhood Preservation Program.
Okay. Thank you so much. One of the streets that I've heard a lot about, and isn't included in here, but I do, I would like for the public to understand why not, is Jefferson Boulevard from Marshall to Southport Parkway. I, I will get questions like, "Yes, you're doing this great thing, but why isn't that street included?"
So when we put together this bid package, we wanted to keep the momentum moving forward because we had told not only all of you, but also the neighbor, the community members that were reaching out to us, that this was going to be moving forward. And so, we are actually taking a look at that and seeing if we can fit it in, once we award this contract into this work as well, because we have been hearing the exact same thing, that we need to include that section. And so, we're, we're taking a look at it right now to see how we can make that happen.
Thank you. I drove through it recently. I know there were some pothole repairs, but it's still bad. I mean, it's like an Indiana Jones ride. You're trying to duck a pothole and hoping that the car's not coming the other way.
It's fair. It's totally fair.
It's, it's a rough ride. So I, I think, thank you for mentioning that that's being taken into consideration, because what I've been told, it's related to a developer who's building out and waiting for that to happen, I think. It's just so hard these days for that to happen.
And we can definitely follow up with you all, either through the newsletter or through your briefings with City Manager's Office in the future.
Okay, thank you.
And if I could just chime in on the last point you made there, Mayor. The, the project that we would be talking about is not the full rebuild. It's a, it's a pavement rehabilitation of the existing configuration. But it is, it is accurate to say that once development happens further in Southport, that section of Jefferson will be built out to its kind of complete street figure, configuration, with sidewalks, bike lanes, all that. But that's, that is dependent on future development, so...
Right.
The project that we're talking about for now is a rehabilitation of the existing configuration of the road.
Madam Mayor, can I?
Just real quick. All right, thank you. So Ariana, I was, I know this is particular to a certain area, but we had talked about sidewalks in different parts of the city. Kind of outreach is being done? I mean, we have people who speak many different languages, Spanish, Russian, Afghan. Was outreach done to these individuals as well? When consideration was taken in?
So, are you referring to this project in particular? I heard you say sidewalks, so I want to make sure I'm answering correctly.
You're talking about the Sacramento? No. I'm talking about, right, like Sacramento Avenue and places like that. Those are areas that need embankments. I mean, something besides just what's there right now.
Right. So I can actually, if she's still sitting in the right spot, kind of hand it over to talk about Sacramento Avenue specifically, because there's been some robust outreach doing. Is that what you were referring to, Sacramento Avenue?
It was.
Is that this one?
No, no, no.
I think I just answered it generally, because it's not the agenda topic, but...
No, it's not.
But I'll, I'll say, though, when we are doing the sidewalk gap analysis portions of road rebuilds...
I know it's not...
There is absolutely that kind of outreach that's done in neighborhoods that have multiple languages, so without diverging too much from the topic, definitely when we're doing outreach for sidewalk gap projects, we do that kind of outreach.
Well, I know it's part of a bigger project, but that's why I'm asking ahead of time.
I can talk to the outreach related to this contract...
All right.
Because it's going to affect quite a few neighborhoods, there is outreach that's done and incorporated into the work, and we do translate it in multiple languages or give the option to link to that. It, it kind of depends per project, and we look at the, where the project is located to best serve and make sure that we cover all the languages that are represented there.
Councilmember Early.
So, I, I just want to make sure we're clarified. I, I like, in theory, the idea of waiting to completely fix our roads until a developer comes in, and I, I think that Southport has actually benefited quite significantly from that investment, again, from private developers. However, I think part of the infrastructure that we now are dealing with in Southport, both, in both districts, is the fact that as development has slowed, and some of these projects that have been in development agreements for over a decade haven't come to fruition, the roads haven't been invested in, in hopes that development would come in. And so, yes, great, long-term aspirational plan, but in the meantime, it really is like an Indiana Jones ride, particularly between Marshall, on Jefferson, between Marshall and Southport. And I, I just, I would like, and I, I know I'm not the only one who drives that road, to know the plan, and you don't have to tell me today, but I have to admit, I get a little anxious when I hear, like, "Hey, we're going to try," without knowing exactly when we might find out when that trying turns into actualization.
So, as I said, once, if approved tonight, which we're hoping we get the approval, when we meet with the contractor, we can get that additional information, more detailed information, and share it either through the newsletter or through your briefings with the City Manager's Office. So I would say, within a couple, a couple months, you would get back what the schedule is for this, what could and could not be included.
And I'll go a step further there. So I think, I think what you're speaking to is more, when do we get the complete street rebuild of Jefferson to full length if development doesn't occur?
Yes.
Or if it doesn't occur in the timeframe where we'd like to see it happen?
Yeah.
There is a precedent for this, and I'll, I'll use Village Parkway as an example. Village Parkway was built years ahead of what, when it would have been built with development occurring, because we had opportunities to leverage other funding. In that case, it was a combination of the flood program and some grant funding. But there is a precedent where we can go ahead and build and then try to seek, you know, reimbursement for, through development agreements, that kind of approach. I would not preclude that happening on that stretch of Jefferson Boulevard, but it would require the council to prioritize that project and accelerate the development of it ahead of new development. So that's something that can be done, but it's definitely a big undertaking, and it's something I would encourage the council to look at in the context of strategic planning.
Thank you both for, for that response.
Thank you, yes. All right. You also number five, by any chance? All right, thank you. We have the State Streets Pavement Rehabilitation Project. Now, I needed a map from a visual person to help me understand, but I understand that this is kind of like the entire, all the state streets. Is that, just kind of, just...
I keep on the map.
You have a map? So, so that's one, so I appreciate that there is a map. Councilmember, members of Peseo Hall, but when we're looking at what we're voting on, it, it helps to have a map attached to what we're voting on, is what I'm asking. So, I don't know if they're, if the two, I mean, I, I would love to connect the dots for all of us here, but I just want to make sure that what we are voting on is the, is exactly what's on the internet, or, or if it's the entire, so just kind of give me the parameters, because that would be very helpful.
Yeah, let me try to explain a little bit. The item tonight that's going before you is a contract for construction management and design for this project.
Okay.
There is a map provided on the city website, which we did set up after we had a presentation of this item at the last council meeting. So it does provide the boundaries for this project. So the step that we're doing right now, tonight, and asking for approval, is to get final design to understand what we're going to go out for construction, and we anticipate doing, we anticipate doing that early 2024. Once we get this team on board, they can help us do the final design and also put together the bid package for construction, and at that point, we'll have a better idea of exactly where. So, right now, what we could do is give you a boundary of the neighborhood, and then when we come back with our construction contract, we can definitely include an exhibit that shows more of an idea of what areas will be affected.
And I'll just say, to the general, general comment, there's a few items tonight that have areas of town that didn't necessarily have a map attached, so that, that's a pointed direction that I've already started there with the staff, that we'll make sure that as we, as we work on these projects, we take every opportunity to kind of give you the big, you know, the big picture of, of the area that we're working on. So, on this one, it would have been the whole state streets neighborhood. That's the general area for now.
And, and just to the extent that we make sure that we inform the state streets neighborhood through an insert in their utility bill of the step that we took today and what outreach will be done for them to participate in the planning. I don't know if that's included in this process.
So, we're at the design phase, so we're past planning, but we are, look, we are, we do have a, a plan in place for outreach and community engagement.
Okay.
At this point, what we're going to be doing is, because there's been some time since we went out for the water and the sewer, we're going to provide some outreach to that area that I noted before, to let them know what is going on, what occurred tonight, the, how we're building this team to keep this project moving forward. We are going to provide it direct mail and door hangers, translated, to make it neighborhood-focused.
Okay.
And then, we are planning on doing another level of outreach once we go into construction. And so, we will also plan on updating that website that we set up on a monthly basis and be able to provide folks with the ability to meet with staff on a one-on-one, just to answer questions, both virtually or in person. So we definitely know that this is going to be impactful because it's in a residential area. We want to be able to provide that connection and the feedback loop.
Thank you so much. And Councilmember Alcala has a question. Just a real quick question. How many bids did we get for this? Bennett Engineering got the contract, but how many bids did we get?
We received one.
Bennett?
Bennett.
Okay. For the mayor's point, once again, those cards that are going out, are they going out only in English?
I'm sorry.
Are the cards only going out in English to advise them? The door hangers?
So, what we have talked about doing is English and then a link, like a QR code or a website link to be able to get the Spanish and Russian version.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ariana. I, I know that this is a long-term investment that we made several years ago. We began with the water and sewer. I see the crews out there doing the work. I know there have been folks who have commented, like, one of the sidewalks, one of the, you know, when are we going to see the rest of it? But I understand that there were the preliminary investment in making sure we ripped out what we need to rip out to replace before we actually did the pavement. Am I fair and sane?
Mm-hmm.
So, the, with respect to, I think it was just a matter of probably just letting the community members know, "Hey, look, this is going to get taken care of." I think that was probably one of the, you know, the only feedback that I had received is like, "Well, wait a second. I thought we talked about this years ago, but we couldn't do the pavement until we did the other things." And I see them out there changing those huge pipes in one of the oldest parts of our city, so thank you for, make sure, let the, the crews know that their work is respected and the investment. And I know we've made some pretty big moves in the last few years with some major projects. We haven't cured all of the city's ills, but at least we are, you know, moving in the right direction. So thanks for the update.
Oh, yes. Councilmember Peseo Hall.
Thank you. I wasn't planning to post it since it's here. I just wanted to thank you for getting that website up as quick as possible. We talked about communicating with the residents quickly in the last council meeting, and to have the website turned around so fast, thank you very much. And web, updates are going to be happening monthly to that, correct? Okay, thank you for that.
And I think that goes to Mayor Protemba Roscoe's comment about when, and that's something we get asked about frequently, is when. And so, pointing to the website will be helpful and, you know, you know, maybe showing that this action was taken as part of the process. It's a process.
And we'll also include the outreach that we're sending out as links on the website and provide update schedules. All that information will be available on there.
Thank, thank you. Appreciate you doing that, that work. And item number six, I have, anybody else have any questions? Nobody? Okay, thank you so much, Ariana. On item number six, just to point out, any concerns related to, hello, Stephanie? How are you? Concerns related to safety? Just to make sure, you know, just, that is one of the areas that I do want to make sure that, you know, we have an on-demand rideshare program that we can track safety issues as well. And I know we, I get emails, you know, complaints or whatever that I, I send over and get, I get responses, and people are satisfied with the results after there's attention to the matter. I think what I've understood is just being able to contact management, see a resolution, and if we're going to be doing something and we, and we offer, you know, the financing for it, that the management is attentive and responsive to the concerns raised by the constituents. And I, and I appreciate that it's on the agenda. I know that it didn't have to be, but I do appreciate that. So, thank you.
Thank you, noted.
Any other comments about? So with that, I will accept a motion without item number seven to approve. Early moves. Second. Okay. Madam Clerk, Councilmember Early moved, and Councilmember Alcala seconded. Please call the roll.
Councilmember Peseo Hall?
Aye.
Councilmember Early?
Aye.
Councilmember Alcala?
Aye.
Mayor Protemba Roscoe?
Aye.
Mayor Guerrero?
Aye. All right, this item is approved, and one of the things I did not do is accept public comment. Were there any public comment on any of this?
No, ma'am.
No request for public comment, either this or item seven?
No, no consent agenda item.
Thank you so much. And next, for item, item seven, I'll accept a motion? I'll second. Mayor Protemba Roscoe moved, and Councilmember Verna Peseo Hall seconded. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Peseo Hall?
Aye.
Councilmember Early?
Aye.
Councilmember Alcala? Oh, I'm sorry. Mayor Protemba Roscoe?
Aye.
Mayor Guerrero?
Aye. All right, this item is approved for zero and one abstention. Is that how it's called, is an abstention?
It's a recusal.
No, it's actually a recusal, correct. Okay, thank you so much. Next, on our public hearing agenda item 12, under finances, public hearing and consideration of Resolution 23-49, confirming the diagram and assessment ordering improvements, maintenance to be made for the landscaping and lighting district. Number one, Mr. Mark Rotaville?
Yes, Rodaville.
Rodaville, our finance analyst. Thank you.
Good evening, Madam Mayor and members of the council. This is a routine item. This item is for the landscape and lighting district. This assessment was adopted prior to the Prop 218 process, but this is a requirement from the county that we come before you to adopt the resolution of approving the map and the assessment, so it can be placed on the tax roll. Tonight, we are asking to hold a public hearing and after the public hearing, to adopt the resolution confirming the diagram and assessment and ordering improvements to be made.
Are there any questions among councilmembers? No? I'll accept, if there's any public comment, Madam Clerk, first?
No, ma'am.
Nope, we'll close the public comment on this and bring them back to council. Any other comments, questions, motion? I'll second. All right. Mayor Protemba Roscoe moved, and Councilmember Peseo Hall seconded. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Peseo Hall?
Aye.
Councilmember Early?
Aye.
Councilmember Alcala?
Aye.
Mayor Protemba Roscoe?
Aye.
Mayor Guerrero?
Aye.
All right, thank you so much. Next is item 13, public hearing and consideration of Resolution 23-50, confirming the diagram and assessment ordering improvements for the storm drain maintenance district number one, Rayleigh's... one, Rayleigh's Landing. There you are again.
Again, very similar to the last item. Good evening, Madam Mayor and members of the council. This is a routine item, just like the previous item. This item is for the storm drain maintenance district. We are not imposing any crisis to the assessment district. This assessment was also adopted prior to the Prop 218 process, but this is a requirement from the county that we come before you to adopt the resolution of approving the map and the assessment so it can be placed on the tax roll. Tonight, we are asking to hold a public hearing and after the public hearing, to adopt the resolution confirming diagram and assessment and ordering improvements to be made.
Thank you. Any questions among the councilmembers, comments, feedback, thoughts? Okay.
We have no request to speak on this item.
Speaking. All right. Public comment was considered and is now closed and bring it back to council for a motion? Early moves? All right. Madam Clerk, Councilmember Early moved and Mayor Protemba Roscoe seconded. Please call the roll.
Councilmember Sulpicio Hall?
Aye.
Councilmember Early?
Aye.
Councilmember Alcala?
Aye.
Mayor Protemba Roscoe? Mayor Guerrero?
Aye. All right, this item is approved. Next is item 14, public hearing and consideration of Resolution 23-55, certifying inclusion of delinquent charges and penalties for water, sewer, and refuge. And we have, is it Angie Familia, our finance supervisor?
Yes.
Thank you.
Hi. Good evening, Madam Mayor and members of the council. I'm Angie Familia from the finance department. Every year, the city conducts a public hearing in order to place the delinquent water, sewer, and refuse charges on the secured property tax roll. And at the same time, we request authorization to place liens on these delinquent properties. Toward the end of each fiscal year, city staff prepares a list of unpaid utility service charges on accounts that have been delinquent for more than 60 days. We use that list to send out notices in mid-June to notify the customers of the delinquent amount and encourage them to pay, and of course, to reach out to the city if they have any questions. As of today, the delinquent amount of the utility service charges has reduced to $828,697. The city staff will continue to accept payments through July 27th to allow staff to have a few days to process all the final payments and pull together the list in order to be submitted to the county and to be added to the 2324 tax roll. At this time, I would love to answer any questions that the council may have and to also ask for the council to open the public hearing.
All right, thank you, Ms. Familia. And at this time, I would accept any comments or questions. Yes, go ahead, Mayor Protemba Roscoe.
I know that some time back during COVID, our city had adopted a policy, at least during that time, to not charge late fees. Have they been re-imposed and are folks facing those in addition to the fees that they owe?
We did just reimpose them in April. So the first bill that they would have been on was May, so really only one month of the time since we sent out the delinquent letters in June.
And so would those late fees continue to compound if the bill is not paid in full? Is that an incentive to do it now?
Yes.
All right. Are there any, what type of outreach have we made with these folks to let them know that they're going to have this type of penalty if they don't pay?
So we put it on the website. We also added it to our utility billings in January, and we've also posted on social media.
Are we willing to make payment assistant plans for folks that can only make partial payments?
We are.
Excellent. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam. Oh, don't, don't go away quick. It's okay. It looks like Councilmember Early has questions.
I was trying to give her space. So I just have just a couple of questions.
Okay.
So you said they've been given 60-day notice to pay, or maybe I missed this?
We sent out the notices towards the beginning of June, yeah. So it's been, go ahead, sorry.
No, 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 go ahead.
Quite a few people have paid since then.
So I'll just give you an example. This property, 1250 Hal yard Drive, $42,000, so it, it had been delinquent for 60 days or it had been delinquent for a very long time, and you basically said you have 60 days, otherwise we're sending you, we're going to put a lien on your property. I just wanted to understand how that actually works.
They've been delinquent for quite some time.
Okay.
Yeah. That's why it's a large hotel.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right, you said their hotel?
Their hotel.
Okay. Wow, okay. I'm good.
You're good? All right. Okay, we'll just open it up for public comment, Madam Clerk.
I have no request to speak on this item.
Close the public comment, bring it back to council for any additional questions, comments, or a motion.
Early seconds.
Okay, Mayor Protemba Roscoe moved. Thank you, Ms. Familia, for all your hard work on this.
Thank you.
And Councilmember Early seconded. Please call the roll.
Councilmember Sulpicio Hall?
Aye.
Councilmember Early?
Aye.
Councilmember Alcala?
Aye.
Mayor Protemba Roscoe?
Aye.
Mayor Guerrero?
Aye. This item is approved. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
All right. We will go next to our general administration function, part two. And do we have reports from our council assignments? I do. Yes, Council, Mayor Protemba Roscoe.
Thank you. The Board of Directors for the Sacramento Area Regional Sanitation District met on July 12th. We discussed a variety of matters, including one of which that we had on the consent agenda, which was the approval of the billing and collection agreement between the Sacramento Regional County Sanitation District and the City of West Sacramento. As I mentioned before in my reports, the City of West Sacramento has been an auxiliary member of the regional sanitation board, and we have a, part of our agreement is that we have, actually, our position is on regional sand, but then there's also regional, sack sewer district. What we also talked about, though, was this one district corridor report. For the last two years, roughly, we've had a subcommittee, I was on that subcommittee along with our county supervisor, Oscar Viejas, to talk about how we could merge the districts into one that will take, it would be under the umbrella of just not regional sand anymore, but only sack sewer. And we will continue the relationship. We're merging into having our own staff and our own human resources department and facilities and infrastructure. We also received an update on the biosolids management plan, an echo water project report on, and I found this very relevant, on chlorine plant evaluation. Several months ago, our, what we regularly paid for chlorine at approximately 87 cents a gallon had pretty much tripled to $2.45 a gallon, which is placing a tremendous financial impact on the sewer district and regional sanitation. We have to clean the effluent in order to, you know, release that cleaned water into the environment back, either it's through the river or it's through our harvest water project, which would go to ranchers and folks that are growing agriculture. With that said, there have been millions of dollars that we've now had to shell out for the extensive price of chlorine. And so then there was feedback about, well, what if we created our, invested $45 million into our own chlorine-producing plant, which has its own host of other problems. But apparently, there has been a reduction of chlorine providers, which has placed a tremendous burden on lots of municipalities who rely on chlorine and, you know, for their swimming pools, for their sanitation and whatnot. But I found that to be very relevant. And we also adopted an investment policy for regional sanitation in the sewer district and, again, discussed the merger between the two agencies and how our city would be represented on that. And we would actually have full representation. We would no longer be an auxiliary member, which is great. We were no longer the stepchild of the region, so, along with a couple others. But that concludes my report. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you so much, Mayor Protemba Roscoe, for all your work on that effort. Thank you. Any other reports? Yes, councilmember, leave it.
Thank you. So I attended the Yolo Transportation District meeting, actually, this past Monday, and we were given a report out on our managed toll lanes project, which really has been led by YTD and the fact that we actually did not receive a grant from the state in order to fulfill the $107 million gap for our managed toll lanes project that connects really to, right before Davis, all the way to Sacramento, really where it gets bottlenecked at the causeway. And it goes from really four lanes to three, and then three, 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 and then you get bottlenecked again, and then it goes back to four. We really, in this long stretch of freeway, are the only spot where it goes from four to three. And so we discussed what some of those options were. We currently have $86 million from the federal government that we have to encumber in the next 12 months on the actual construction. Yes. We are waiting for Caltrans to do their, I may get this part wrong, EFD report. Did I, does that sound, anyone in transportation? Nope. Okay. That would just go with it. Their environmental report, which was actually supposed to come in July, particularly if we had actually gotten the money of $103 million, we still would have been short by about $4 million. We are, that's now been postponed, and they're hoping, Caltrans is hoping to get this environmental report complete and to the public by the end of August. Even with that being done, it will be a very, very tight timeline to move that project forward. Currently, we are discussing as a board what our options are regarding this project so that we would not have to lose those $86 million towards the project. I will also note that Secog had allocated a little over $2 million for the planning and design work for this project, some of that's in work, but mostly for the planning. And so we are still moving forward on the planning piece and working to figure out what is possible in regards to seeing at least a Phase One happen for this project. I'll keep you updated, but it does
Thank you.
seriously impact, obviously, the entire region, but particularly West Sacramento residents.
And I would just be curious to know if the Enterprise Bridge has any nexus to the expansion of this?
That's a good question.
Tangentially, yes, because it's on that same corridor, but we weren't relying on, just to be clear, we weren't relying on any of the funding from that project to help our project in any way.
Just the completion, just to kind of like, that project can tie into it, but not the funding, correct? I get that.
Right. And I don't, I don't, I'm not as familiar probably as Councilmember Early with the scope of that project, but don't recall if there were actual interchange improvements at Enterprise. I would assume there were some, but it doesn't impact our ability to plan our project, if that's.
Currently, we're discussing a couple of those and whether those would still happen, Aaron, at least in Phase One. Some of the public comments you have actually heard over the past couple of meetings have been in reference to the expansion or the actual widening. So when we say widening, not physical additions to the causeway, but actually cutting into the shoulder and some of that space, again, anyone who rides a causeway, cutting into the shoulder to add a fourth lane that would be a toll lane. We've discussed the importance of equity and also being able to recoup some of those dollars from the tolls in order to then further invest in improvements across our region, particularly in Yolo County. With this gap, huge gap in funding, some of the things that were discussed by the board in regards to whether it should be an HOV lane or a toll was, several of my board members said that without it being a toll lane, it would be difficult to support that project moving forward if it was just an HOV lane, because that was not the spirit of what was originally passed and voted on.
Thank you for that additional information. Very helpful. Look forward to hearing more on that with my one-on-ones with the city manager, just how that they work together. Sorry, you could barely hear me in this mic, huh? Is it, is it turned on?
The mic, it seems to be going in and out a little bit, so if you could just repeat that question. I'm sorry, I missed that part.
Yeah, just a little more background on my one-on-one with you when I go over.
Oh, sure. Absolutely.
That would be helpful. Okay. Thank you. And Councilmember Alcala?
Thank you. I attended on June 14th the Yolo Solano Air Quality Management District Board of Directors' meeting. We approved the, here we go, we accepted and filed, actually, first, the audit of the Yolo Solano Air Quality Management District's financial statement for fiscal year '21 through '22. We approve a special district's authorization form, which is required by the Yolo County Department of Financial Services. We also approved Resolution Number 23-08 to accept wood smoke reduction program funding. We authorized district staff to work with the Yolo County Climate Action Commission and to update the Yolo Solano Air Quality Management District's policy and procedure manual. There was a public hearing, deliberation, and action on a proposed budget for fiscal year '23 through '24, and discussion as well on clean air fund, committee funding recommendations. And then we adjourned. That was it.
All right, thank you. And yes, Councilmember Sulpicio Hall?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. On July 6th, the Executive Commission to Address Homelessness met in West Sacramento, and it was wonderful to have a meeting in West, a county-wide meeting in West Sacramento. On the agenda, we had regular updates, but we had presentations from two cities, both the City of Woodland and the City of West Sacramento, on their programs to address homelessness. And I wanted to just take a second and compliment the City of West Sacramento staff for attending that meeting. Raul Horta and Taylor Nelson presented and shared what West Sacramento has been working on for a very long time, and everybody in the room was incredibly impressed. We are a leader in the county when it comes to the work we're doing to address homelessness, and other cities are watching. And it was said in the meeting, we're watching what West Sacramento is doing. And so just wanted to compliment the staff and everyone who's been working so incredibly hard on that for so long. And in order us to continue moving the needle, every city in the region needs to be doing what West Sacramento is doing. So it was a wonderful meeting, and it was wonderful to have everybody in West Sacramento and share the great work we're doing.
Very good. Thank you. I need two mics like you, Councilmember Sulpicio Hall.
I don't know which way I'm supposed to go sometimes.
So anyways, just Port Commission met tonight, and they approved consideration of professional services contract for the Port of West Sacramento groundwater storm water management services. They also adopted the port budget for fiscal year '23, '24. That, you know, background is included in the Port Commission website, which includes capital improvement that we are now considering as a result of taking a look at making some, having some of the port older industrial areas cleaned up and getting some areas cleared for SSA Marine to do additional activity as they, as they can, as they should have, given they have a five-year contract to continue to work and do operations in the port. And next is on our agenda is our council appointments, and I'd like to thank the clerk and the staff for also providing the additional copies of that information here in front of us. And I would like to consider making a couple of recommendations, and then we can discuss the commission appointments to make a decision. So I have, for the EIFD Public Financing Authority, I have one recommendation, Alex Hirsch. And then for the Transportation Mobility Infrastructure Commission, Pearson Rohr. And although Pearson's from District Two, I wanted to point that out, we have a District Three vacancy, so I just wanted to make sure you're aware of that background. So, and then put it out there for other recommendations, thoughts, feedback?
Regarding the TMI Commission, Pearson Rohr with his work with Saba and Jive, I think would be a wonderful addition to the commission.
Okay. Yeah, I agree with that. You're good with Pearson Rohr?
Well, I just want to give a shout out to Danny Therical, who's worked on transportation, but I know he was not the recommendation, and just like Danny had an incredible record, a lot of commitment to working with transportation. He'd sat on the board before, and Danny is from District Two.
Yeah, they're both, they're both from District Two. All right. Any other thoughts?
No, I was highly impressed with several of these, but Pearson Rohr was also the one that I thought was a standout. I was appreciative of, he was, you know, he diversified the board, being from the[1753.52]
I was appreciative of, he was, you know, he diversified the board, being from the district that he's in, you know, that we're underrepresented when it comes to District Two. But I did like the application.
And just, and yeah, just to speak about Danny, he has, he is a public, you know, writer, you know, he does write out in the public, and he goes to school and other in the region. Reason why I selected Pearson was, first of all, he has participated in the Transportation Commission in the past, but he's also, Saba is a Sacramento Area Bicycle advocacy organization that he works for and is real, pretty plugged in to the region on where we're moving. He's also hosting, I don't know if you know, on Sunday, a bike ride from Sacramento to West Sacramento, and just he organizes those type of events. Also, through the annual, you know, Bicycle, you know, Ride Your Bike Month, their organization is the lead, and they host it here in West Sacramento, just trying to encourage and promote safe bicycle riding, and more than willing to continue to do more work in West Sacramento to achieve that through schools. If you have any, you know, interest to work through schools or any of your organizations, Girl Scouts, Boy Scouts, whatever it is, that we can do to promote that, he's not only, you know, as a resident, but as an advocate for his full-time job. And one of the other ideas he shared, which is why I wanted to get him on, is his, Saba has a program that gives free bikes if there is training, if the individual goes through training. And I strongly promoted that here and support that, but I think, you know, getting the training to ride your bike safely and then, you know, earning a bike at the end, subsidizing that and supporting that effort. So, that's something that they do. So, with that, that's the recommendation I have for that. So, if we're okay with that, then EIFD? We're gonna have to take separate votes, by the way, for each. Okay.
You said we do or we don't?
We... Would you?
Don't have to do them separate. You can do them as one.
As one. Okay, thank you. Yes, go ahead. Madam Mayor. And we have two vacancies, by the way.
On EIFD, right?
Yes.
Yeah, there are two public member seats on that authority per state law, so they haven't been filled in quite some time. We do have three councilmember currently filled, so we can have meetings. There's nothing stopping us from being able to meet, but we have the two public members still making...
Okay. So, two appointments we can make tonight.
Right. There are two, up to two public members on that authority. So, my point is that the authority itself can hold meetings, because we do have the three councilmember seats filled already.
If I may?
Yes.
I understand that it's, we are anticipating making a recommendation to the EIFD tonight. I will say that we had four applications, which is great. I did, when we went through the appointments process for all of the commissions, I think we could all agree that District Two was a little less represented than most of them. And I think it has to do with the way the district looks. Currently, there's, it just hasn't been activated as much as, say, my colleagues in District Three and Four, which happened to have a lot more representation. I know we made a deliberate effort to try to reach out to folks and make sure District One was represented with the candidate pool that we had. However, just a few days ago, I did get contacted by somebody in District Two who has expressed interest in this. If there is no impediment to perhaps allowing one additional meeting, so that way we could potentially solicit at least one additional application, doesn't mean that the person gets chosen, it's just that they would be considered, I think, for equity purposes and to ensure diversification throughout these commissions. It would be prudent, especially on one that is so important. Not that they're not all important, but I think if we could potentially appoint for one and postpone for the other, that would be my request.
Thank you. Any other comments?
I'd be comfortable with that as well. I mean, something we could think about if we wanted to is we could, a representative from Districts One or Two, and then a representative from Districts Three or Four. So, breaking it up, if we wanted to do it that way. Just a thought. I mean, it's similar to just what Councilmember, Mayor Protamorosco, said.
We have, we can do two, we can't do one.
Correct. So, one representative would be either from District One or Two, and then the second representative would be from District Three or Four.
From Three or Four. Okay. That makes sense. I get it.
We could go that way.
Okay. Councilmember Early?
I'm completely fine with waiting, as long as it's not going to impact our ability to get the business of governance done, and it sounds like we have enough representation in regards to the three to be able to move whatever needs to be moved forward right now. I think that's what I understood. I get, as districts are really, really... What you actually heard me say during the first round of us trying to appoint is this idea of saying, well, this district should have this many and this should have this. It really depends on what the applicant pool, as well as qualified applicant pool, is available to us. And so, I have to admit, I get a little nervous trying to be prescriptive at this point in time, as our city is still trying to get used to it, and we still don't have representation for District One and Two yet. And so, fine with waiting, get a little hesitant in trying to allocate and prescribe districts right now.
And as a reminder, District One and Two are still at large.
Yes.
So, that's like they're at large, and then One and Two can be merged into One, and then Three and Four do have their own presentation. Councilmember Early? No, I don't. Sorry, Early. Akala?
No, I'm fine with it.
So, is it okay to select one and then keep one open at this point? Okay. So, is Alex Hirsch, are we okay with Alex Hirsch?
I just want to make sure I heard correctly.
And we leave one open?
Okay. Is that, I have no idea. I thought we were waiting just on the EFID. Did I get those acronyms correctly? I thought we were waiting for that, and then we were appointing the other one, but...
That was my recommendation, that we do TMI and then look at PFA at the next meeting with her.
I just wanted to make sure I was following.
Wait for EIFD altogether for the next meeting.
That was my recommendation.
Then if you'd like to wait, then that's, we will only accept at this time the Transportation and Mobility Infrastructure Commission, Pearson Rohr at this point. That's my recommendation. I'll accept a motion. The move.
Early seconds?
Madam Clerk?
Councilmember Sulpicio Hall?
Aye.
Councilmember Early?
Aye.
Councilmember Akala?
Aye.
Mayor Protamorosco?
Aye.
Mayor Guerrero?
Aye.
And to clarify, I'm going to open up the application for the EIFD Public Financing Authority for an additional two weeks.
So, just for the timing, on August 2nd, we get the packet on Friday. How does that work? Like, what is your drop date time for you to prepare and mail that to us for all the applications?
That same day.
Yeah, I think what I recommend there is just to keep the application period open until the seats are filled, if that makes it easier.
Okay. And we're also still accepting applications for the Board of Appeals.
And that too.
That's the council's prerogative, but I think that would be an easy fix for the city clerk's office, just to keep the applications are open until the council fills the seats.
Right.
Madam Mayor, I do want to clarify, so we will be bringing this potential opening back up at our next meeting, because that was the recommendation, and I wouldn't want it to go out too long.
Right.
I just want to make sure.
I would like to have gotten it done tonight, but, I mean, it's been going on for, since we, I think they put the applications up before.
So, basically, we're just saying we're gonna wait two weeks. That's really all we're saying.
Two weeks.
That's fair. Okay.
Okay. Then we'll bring it back for a decision August 2nd. Is that our next meeting?
Yes.
All right. Next is, then, did you finish picking the vote? Are we done with that? Are you good? Okay. Good. Council Calendar?
Good evening. Tomorrow at 12:30 is a celebration at Southport Gateway Park for the new shade structure and for Parks Make Life Better Celebration. And that's at Gateway Park.
Thank you. City Manager Report?
No reports tonight. Thank you.
City Attorney Report?
No report tonight.
And Staff Direction from City Council Members? Okay. Future agenda item requests, City Council? None? All right. Mayor, may I say something? Go ahead.
I just want to give a shout-out for Holy Cross. They're having their annual festival the first time since COVID hit, and it's going to be August 5th and 6th. It's a wonderful community event. I believe it's our 67th annual festival, and it's always a lot of fun for the families out there. We're gonna have great music, so I just want to put that out there for everyone to enjoy.
Thank you.
Yes, you may. Every year, I try to put on a school supply drive in an effort to stuff 700,000 backpacks to distribute within the West Sacramento community. I'm a little nervous about this one, because it's my first one kind of in a while, and would love to share the event with staff and my colleagues on the dais. Everything is well, I know Councilmember Sulpicio Hall won't be around this weekend, but brought, you know, some very well-appreciated school supplies. But every donation makes a big difference. We're looking to partner with local organization that we've done, Yolo County Children's Alliance, that are going to give these backpacks out to kids in need on August 5th. So, we'll be out in front of Whitey's Jolly Cone, which is new for us, because it's always been in the same location with the former sale-in and Jefferson Bar and Grill. But we'll be out in the heat at Whitey's Jolly Cone, so look for the pop-ups, and if you can bring kids. I always love to see kids do the donations, because then they get to give back in their own way and pick the school supplies. And I think it makes, it's an all-around great opportunity for all of us to, you know, do something kind for people in our community who need it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor Protamorosco. Greatly appreciate all your work on that. It's admirable. And with that, I'll accept a motion to adjourn.